All right, Debbie, you want to go ahead and call us to order? Here.
Here.
And.
Standing on the leaders in the. I just, I just look out and the first person I see, you're already in the front. Thanks, Stan.
All right. So. Before we hop into the approval minutes, I think I need to make a motion to. To approve the amended agenda or amend the agenda, is that correct? We had a couple of items that slightly changed on this. So how specific do I need to be with that motion?
I would just say we've moved to amend the agenda to add additional items set forth in the agenda as published.
Okay, so I moved to amend the agenda to set forth the items. Modified as stated in the agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, and now we can move on to approval of minutes.
Motion.
Seconded.
Motion is second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, we'll hop into departmental updates, Chief Rockerman.
So the township had a. Our national night out this past Wednesday. The fire department, service department, and the police department, as well as administration, all took part. We probably had the biggest crowd that we've ever had. For National Night Out, from what I was told. The weather held off. We just had a great event, a lot of people in the vendors area, and it was very well received. And we got a lot of positive feedback from it. The other thing I want to announce is. Police Officer Daphne Nickel graduated with her master's degree in criminal justice this past weekend. And we posted that on our Facebook page, we got over a thousand likes on that and comments to Daphne, so. Again, good press for our police department, but Daphne is a great employee and we're happy to have her.
It's great. Just real quick to echo the national and out, and I was there, a great event, you guys just did an outstanding job putting that on. And I always like seeing too, the fact that you guys all kind of work together, the fire. Guys and the service guys, John, I saw your guys pitching in and doing a lot. And that's what really makes that event turn out nice, it was really a nice event, so I appreciate it from everybody. All right, Chief Wright.
Last month, Assistant Chief Watkins took our new fire engine to the Clermont County Fair parade that opens the event. And Deputy Chief Masters sent his staff car. I'm happy to report that. They won first place, best of show.
Whoa.
Very nice.
So thank you for getting the engine and. Everybody was really impressed, even our sales rep saw it online and was out of state and called, so.
That's great.
For you guys, so, and for the, all the residents.
I was just thinking, that's a million five trophy right there.
Thank you for a million dollars.
I love that.
That's true, my son got one, it looks similar for soccer, he's seven. And I'm fairly certain they took a kid playing soccer and ripped it off the top of it.
We also sent an ambulance over to the fair for coverage one night for one of the events, something that all the departments do. Every year to assist Stone Lake Township with all the various events going on. Just to put it in perspective, Stone Lake Township sent an engine down during the flood to help out. And some of their chief officers helped in the command post, so it's just one of the ways we help pay each other back and. And help the county. The only other thing is 4th of July, we participated at their kids bike parade in our park. And then we had a resident organized bike parade in Sedona Ridge and in the Rivendell Estates neighborhood. And for the first year in a few years, happy to report, we didn't have any fireworks related injuries or incidents, so. It's definitely an improvement from the last few years.
Great.
That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Chief Wright. Service Director Kohler.
Got the, we got the Culver Piper place that was on Hopper Ridge Road, it was. Kind of a tricky one, we had to tie into a couple of catch basins. And it was. It, it was just, it was a little deep, it was a little deeper than what normal, so it took a little bit, but. Grove Park, we added a couple benches over there. That we have made in-house. So that, that helps around the playground area. There was, there wasn't any benches, so, and then we also put some benches around the walking trail over at. Spencer Shank Park that were requested by some of the residents over there. And the benches with. With us doing it, we basically made a mold for the, we took a, one of our older benches that we have over here and. We made a template and that we could pour our own, instead of paying a couple hundred bucks for one. Leg, we can make them ourselves for like ten bucks. So we've done that and then. Put them together and they're out and they look good, people are very appreciative of it. The road resurfacing is completed for the year in Pierce. For our roads in Pierce Township, not. The county's roads as well, our roads are completed. And then we also, we. Got the Culver pipe installed on East Legendary that we had to close the road for. That was, that was really tricky, so we got it done, but. We poured the curb back today. And then we'll have a little bit more block hop work to do on it, that's it.
Great. All right, thanks, John. Okay, Parks and Green Space. Anyone here from Parks and Green Space tonight?
Mr. Dressy isn't here right now, but Carl's getting, getting materials to cover the items.
Okay.
All right, I guess I'll just kind of wing this part of it. As far as events goes, the next thing that we have coming up for the parks is the concert in the park on August 23rd with Denim Deluxe. And then we'll have our, our next movie in the park in September on the 13th with A Dog's Purpose. The other item is a playground grant that we've been working with. Mr. Kohler. Looking to potentially replace the equipment in Locust Corner Park. The, it's a 100% matching grant, so basically we would front a certain amount of money and then they would match that to replace it. And so what we are looking to do is just to pursue it, to research it, to see where we could get the funds, just looking for permission to do so.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good, yep.
Also, one of the things that was added is. A plan to replace the bulletin board that's over at Locust Corner Park because it's in bad shape. I guess it's about a gust of wind away from falling down and then potentially adding two as well to Spencer Shank and Grove Parks. On top of that, also looking to purchase a tennis backboard. For the tennis court, we had one previously and when the fences were redone, it was, it was kind of deemed as. You know, just throw it away, so we're looking to replace it, and I'll have motions related to those items later on.
Okay, thanks Carl. Okay, planning and development.
So we're just doing research right now. The second thing is part of the implementation of the land use plan, the land use plan identifies for. Development notes along State Route 25. And calls for. More strict limitations on use, particularly limiting auto work. Auto uses like car sales, gas stations, things like that. This is similar to what's already been done in downtown Amelia Oakley, but we're extending it to these nodes identified in the land use plan. So we are looking at limiting uses similar to the Amelia downtown overlay. We're looking at including smoke shops and massage parlors as well to prohibit it in those areas. And then more strict regulations on signs. Or. Preferring lining the signs over pole signs and all that kind of signs. And then the next thing, we received a concept plan for residential PUD development. On Merlin 10 model, it's thirty seven twenty eight, there's currently a home that's been for sale near a field area. The developer is working with Ashburn Homes and they did formally submit for this open, but so we anticipate that will be on the zoning condition agenda. Next month. The concept plan is for about twenty seven single family homes. Combination of larger lots with additional homes, smaller lots with one inch patio homes. So. The concept plan was reviewed at the last zoning commission and we're looking at the formal zone change request for the next zoning permission meeting and then. They would make the recommendation just forward, there would be public interest for that one. And then an update on enforcement, we have. We have an issue with cars being parked in the front yards, especially in the farm floor huntsman, is that the road? That area. We are. Looking if we might be able to somehow get one parking on the road because in those short cul-de-sac streets. There's not a lot of them to park on the street, so that's causing people to park in their front yard, so. It looks like that's a bigger issue, so we're going to talk to fire department, understand what their needs are for navigating with streets. So we're looking at the bigger picture on that issue.
I'm glad you're looking at the bigger picture on that issue. Because you can't just continually tighten up the constraints of. Of our expectations as a local government and not provide any other option or outlet, particularly when there is no parking on the streets. People have multiple vehicles, I'm sure some people over there have vehicles themselves and then maybe have teenage kids that have vehicles too. And, you know, we need to provide something that's going to work on a broader sense and really take a hard look at that, I think. Great. All right, anything else, Christine? Eddie?
Yep, so American Towers representatives reached out to staff. They wanted to add another 10 years onto their lease contract and really not change much else on the agreement, so. If the board is inclined, we can continue, obviously, we'll always listen to anything that they send before us, but they were just asking for another 10 years. Kind of keeping everything the same, otherwise, so the contract ends in 2039, as it stands now.
Gotcha.
So. Also in your package, beginning on page 125, it's a draft survey on taxation. So. The board directed staff to put together a draft regarding the various different levies that we have. And determine from the public. What their preferences would be as far as which services to support, which ones. And basically just get their opinion overall, whether or not. There are different areas we could focus more or less on, so that's what the survey gets into, it looks at the various different service levels and service types. As well, what our focus would be, would be. Putting it on Facebook, all of our digital methods, having some hard copies available, that sort of thing, all about a three week period. And then bring the results back to this board, that's of course, if you're inclined to proceed with the survey as is, or if you have any, any changes or modifications you want to make. More or less just looking for guidance from you guys, if you're happy with it, or if you want any changes made, that sort of thing.
All right. Anything else?
Do you have, do you guys have a feeling, would you prefer to proceed with the survey, or do you want to hold off at this point in time, or?
I think it's a good idea to poll the public and see what they want us to do.
Yeah.
At least get a pulse.
I think I'm comfortable with. The questions that I saw, I felt comfortable with.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no issue with it, but I would just. You know, caution, ensuring that the data is meaningful. So if you get a certain kind of person that's, you know, motivated to fill out that. Taxation, let's just say I have a survey and I send it out and the link says, you know, opinions on taxation. Well, if I hate taxation, you know, I'm clicking that link as fast as I can, right, I want to get in there and I want to tell you how much I hate taxation. If I'm indifferent to it, I probably just delete it and not, not fill out the survey. I don't know many people that like taxation, so that's probably not really a category, but you see what I'm saying? I mean, you, and then you could end up with, with very skewed type of results. That, and guides your decision making, and it's not actually accurate information, so that, I mean, that's the only piece that I would. Want to ensure that what we're looking at is, is an accurate depiction and swatch of what, what the group that we're surveying thinks and, and that could help guide our decision, but if it's not accurate, it could work in the other direction.
Is there any way around that, you mentioned it in your proposal? One response per, how did you phrase it, IP address or something like that?
Yes.
Is there any way we have to circumvent that, I mean, I don't know much about technology, but. If there is, it could be a concern.
Theoretically, there is, I don't want to give anyone ideas to cheat, but, but I'm teasing, but. Basically, by limiting it by IP address, it would basically be one response per device. That, that's really the only best way we have to do it. If we were to go with an outside party consultant or something to that effect, they would have a method, more or less, we're probably doing like a direct mailer. And waiting the responses to say, you know, we have fifty two percent of our population is in this category or what have you. And making it very scientific, we just don't really have those capabilities, but. Some of our survey software does allow us to make that, that type of limitation, so I couldn't just keep going back each day and resubmitting, you know? And I don't know that we had significant amount of abuse or attempted abuse, I think that. Surveys can be a little mundane, I don't, you know, might be difficult for someone to kind of dedicate the time, but I definitely understand. Your perspective, it's, it is a possibility theoretically, if someone really wanted to abuse it.
So it's one. Response per IP address, period, not one response per day, right, for instance?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
So if you're really motivated.
You've got a bunch of devices.
And you can get in your car and you could go to McDonald's and you could park in the parking lot and log on to their wifi. Right?
You're giving away the secrets.
Anybody who does that, that would be absolutely absurd. I mean, it could be gay. Depends on their level of motivation.
So we'll deploy the survey and provide a report back in September for you guys. The next item I have is a Clermont County Water Resources five year capital plan. They sent those, they sent the document out, it includes a couple high, high items, there are items that have been prioritized over the years, such as the removal of the water tower. At the corner of Lewis and White Oak, for instance, so some of those projects are going to be. Higher up in their priority, if this board has any questions or comments, I can. Facilitate those, but otherwise, they just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. And the last item I have just pertains to the waste contract, so the waste contract expires in February 2026. The levy, levy. Survey might assist us with how our approach would be on that particular item, but again, if this, we're seeking any sort of. Guides that the board might have on, on the waste contract as well, but. February 26th would be here before you know it, so, still want to get caught on our heels.
I mean, that's something I, I think I'd like to get specifically data about that. Given the fact that, you know. Some people, some communities. Most communities actually just have, you know, the township negotiates the overall contract, but then the individuals actually. Have the agreement with Rumpke or BFI or somebody else, so I kind of like to get a sense from the community, whether this is something they want to keep, want to hang on to, what are we, three mills? About three mills on the waste levy, that could be something, there's the gentleman that came in here. What, a couple months ago, he pointed out, you know, it, it, it could be a way to alleviate some pressure from people. In their property tax issues, so I'd like to know whether the community really would, you know, if there's, if there's an issue, would you like to keep it, would you not like to keep it? Would you like to move forward, you know, that's, that would be something that I'd like to, like to get some more feedback on. Before we pull the trigger on putting it back on the ballot, these things is almost every levy goes. Every time you put it back on the ballot, you're going to have to ask for. Progressively more. Revenue because things continue to, with inflation, they cost more and more. So what's a three mil levy now, might be a three point five mil, could be a four, I don't know what it is. We haven't really looked into it, but I would like to hear from the community first, whether or not that's something they'd like to continue or not. Before we go down that path.
I would agree a lot with that, I think that would probably be more useful information than a general taxation.
Yeah.
Survey, I think you're going to get people to give you more accurate, honest feedback on something like that.
What, we do have one question pertaining directly to the waste levy in the survey, so that, that might help, but again, if there's more digging we need to do, we can definitely. But that's all I have.
Great, all right. All right, thanks, Eddie. So, new business, Debbie.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right, Chief Rockerman.
The motion. To accept the resignation of Police Officer John Pelchah. Officer Pelchah's last working day with the police department is August 22nd, 2025. Officer Pelchah leaves the department after 11 years in good standing.
Motion.
Seconded. Motion is second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, Chief Wright.
I request a motion to approve the purchase of three striker life pack CR2 AEDs to replace three obsolete units removed from service in the amount of five thousand four hundred sixty four dollars and fifty three cents. Noting this expense was included in our capital expense plan and budgeted for.
Motion.
Seconded. Motion second, discussion, roll call.
Yes.
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 I request a motion to approve the purchase of new furniture for the day room in the fire station from Munchen's Furniture in the amount of four thousand one hundred twenty two dollars and fifty one cents. Noting this, this replacing furniture that's approximately eight plus years old.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, I heard you got quite the deal on that.
We did, we got a really good deal.
Motion in a second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
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 I request a motion to accept the resignation of part-time firefighter EMT Michael Siciliano, effective August 12th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
John?
I request a motion to approve the last payment for the 2025 road resurfacing program in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and eighty five dollars and fifteen cents.
Motion.
Second. Motion second, discussion, roll call.
Yes.
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 I request a motion to approve the payment of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to Neiman Plumbing Incorporated. For a service call on troubleshooting and cleaning out the sewer. And to authorize payment from the Presley Tiff.
Motion.
Seconded. Motion second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. John?
I request a motion to sell R12, a 2009 International Dump Truck and. A 2007 Bobcat Mini Escavator on Gov Deals, the items were replaced in 2024 and 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, roll call.
Yes.
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 I request a motion to accept the lowest and best bid from Morton Salt Incorporated for the 2025-2026 winter season. To purchase up to a thousand tons of road salt for the cost of ninety thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. At a rate of ninety dollars and sixteen cents per ton dump delivery as ordered by Pierce Township.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, roll call.
Yes.
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 I request a motion for approval of the annual payment for an annual software maintenance agreement upgrade. And IT and maintenance agreement sync from. Nine one of 2025 to eight thirty one of 2016. To Mastermind LLC for the sign program in the amount of one thousand four hundred and seventy five dollar.
Motion.
Seconded.
And it's twenty six.
You need to amend that?
Was that?
You need to amend that motion?
Yeah, it's twenty six, not twenty nineteen.
Gotcha. All right, do I have, I have a, a motion to approve the amended. Motion, essentially, do I have a second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Christine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
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 Okay, Christine.
Six hundred forty dollars, the local match would be twenty one percent, one hundred fifty one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Previously, OKI and TA grant application for the entire Jenny Land Trail project was submitted in June. That would be the whole project. With, we could feed a matching down on that, so if both those grades are awarded, then. The OKI overall project cost would go down and then our total net go down.
Motion.
Seconded. Motion is second, roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Christine, Carl.
Requesting a motion to approve the purchase of three bulletin boards from Belson Outdoors, these boards will be installed at Locust Corners, Spencer Shank and Grove Parts. Including installation expenses provided by the service department, the total cost will not exceed forty five hundred dollars. Including installation expenses provided by the service department. The total cost will not exceed forty five hundred dollars. Fifteen hundred dollars for each board and will be covered by the Parks Improvement Fund. Uh, multiple bids were considered. This was middle of the, of those bids.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Requesting a motion to approve the purchase of a tennis backboard from Tennis Fluid Supply. This equipment will be installed at the Locust Corner Park Tennis Courts. The total cost will not exceed three thousand dollars and will also be covered by the Parks Improvement Fund. And again, multiple bids were considered. This was the middle bit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thanks Carl. Eddie.
Yeah, I request a notification to authorize and approve all actions necessary to execute the opioid direct settlement. So in, in your package, just as a little background, we received a settlement update regarding a loss to Purdue Pharma. And so essentially we're, and I'll defer to legal on this, but we seem to be. Included due to the fact that the state of Ohio is also included, which includes all, uh. Subsequent jurisdictions under the state's authority. And so, uh, this is just an authorization for us to participate. Settlement may or may not go all the way through, but this is just the latest notification we've received.
Similar to how the prior ones operate in respect to the dispersment of opioid funding.
Right.
So moved.
I have a motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Yes.
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 All right, we're on to the public comment portion of our meeting. So anybody who would like to speak, uh. You can go ahead and come on up to the, to the microphone here and if you could state your name. So we know, in case we need to follow up with anything and. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Mark Williams. I live at thirteen seventeen Dorado Court. And I'll thank Mr. Freeman first because he finally got us repaved after thirty years. So. That, that's been nice. Uh, but now I'm here to kind of talk about the intersection at White Oak, Lewis and Route one twenty five. It's a disaster. And I got seven grandkids growing that up in that neighborhood, gonna be going through there very soon. And I've been on ODOT. And they've done a study. The first study they did was done just before COVID hit. And they said, well, there's not a problem. I said, well, there's nobody on the damn highway. Cause COVID had shut everything down. So they finally did another study and they said, well, you were right. And there's a man named Tom Mata. That's in charge of that. Study that they've done and it's, it's now being released. So that I think you all ought to be very. Involved in this because it sounds like there's going to be several steps. Some of them will be maybe just to shut down the end of Lewis. And, and running it through, uh, oh, what's the name of the road there? Blackjack. I'm sure, I'm sure that neighborhood will be tickled, but they just got repaid.
After thirty years.
Yeah. So anyway, um. I, I don't know what, but that's going to be kind of the first thing. So I'm sure that you guys are going to have to get involved because that's more township roads. But the big decisions are going to come when. Or the real rubber hitting the roads is going to be when that whole intersection. And, and just putting a light out there doesn't do anything because you got Lewis running into, into White Oak. I, I guess I think right now to do. Something because I've sat at Lewis coming out onto White Oak to. Merge onto one twenty five. People just, they don't even look for the stop sign there. They just run through it. Claremont County Senior Citizens Bus. And I, you know, I've, I've learned to stop, look, but you know, like I said, I got these seven grandkids and you know how kids are there. They're going to probably run through it too. Um, and it's not just the highway that it's that whole intersection and you got Super Sam's is there. Krogers has really put a burden. On that intersection. I mean, it, a huge burden on that intersection. Um, and it should have been taken care of. When they opened, but it wasn't. Um, so. I got Tom Matt's phone number. And, uh, if you guys want it. Um, it's five, one, three, seven, nine, seven, six, oh, oh, eight. And he's with ODOT.
I hope that's not his cell phone or something.
No, 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 that's his office.
Okay.
He wouldn't give me his cell phone now.
Okay, all right, just making.
Cause I've been, I've been on this poor guy for years.
Yeah, cause you know, this broadcast out to probably millions of people.
Oh, well, that, that's his, okay.
Um, no, that's fine.
But they, they do have the study ready. You guys should be looking at it. Uh, he sent it to me and I. I can't open it, but I'm a, I'm a techy ingenious, so.
Eddie, you sent us some stuff about that specific, um, intersection, um, earlier this week. So perhaps you'd like to say a few things about. Where that stands at the moment.
Yeah. So, uh, right now they're, they're collecting public comments. ODOT is still reviewing the consultant's formal recommendation, but part of that is soliciting feedback from township officials, county officials, as well as other state actors. Uh, it's started, the study started as a partnership between the county township and ODOT, but right now we're kind of collecting their recommendations. That I think there are three different alternatives, technically four. The first alternative is a very short-term kind of rapid approach. That just as you said, it would kind of shut off, uh, one of the, kind of one of the pieces of the roadway and they could test to see how it, how that approach works. Think that they said it would, uh, it would have a notable impact, but it would be significantly more cost effective on the onset. Couple of their other alternatives get progressively more expensive, as I know everyone probably imagined. But they're evaluating kind of those four different methods at this point.
As I recall.
But you're right. They did, they, they did obviously state their agreement with you that something these have done at this.
Well, I think the other thing too, there's some of the designs hinge upon the demolition of the water tower. Because that, that piece of the road that's, you know, where Lewis comes in. That's really awkward, as you well know. And so there, there's, there are some designs that loop Lewis behind that brick building. Um, and it, it actually enters White Oak further down. So it gives you a little bit more. Running room between those two roads.
I think that was, didn't you guys buy that or sell that originally kind of for that purpose?
Yeah, we own the right of way through there. So there's, there is a place for the roadway to sit. So we're, we're prepared to do that. It's just a matter of coming up with the money. And I think we could probably work with ODOT and look into safety money. Um, there's, there, there's, there's some grant funds through safety, a safety program, and that certainly to my mind would apply.
And, you know, just maybe something lit up so that people know that there's a stop sign there at the end of White Oak.
Right.
So that they don't just blow right through it. Yeah, something flashes. I think one thirty two's got one there at that four, four-way intersection.
Right, right.
So that.
Having a flashing light to tell people to stop. There's already a sign here that says, do not block the intersection. You will block that intersection if you're coming off of one twenty five toward Eastbound to come in. That's your.
Your stock out.
You want this down to the side, that intersection.
And there's incessantly that pothole right there when you're trying to turn right and you dump your back tire into it every time, don't you?
They don't have to stop. They're supposed to be able to just go straight and go. And then you stop and the people behind you. Don't ever stop.
Right. And they rocket off of one twenty five. Right. Right.
And then on. Houses. It's a hotness.
Back in the way they had, they redesigned it so that, um, Bristol Lake. And White Oak.
Yeah.
Lewis would all meet. Those mansions just dissolve somewhere.
Well, part. Yeah.
So it's a functional water tower, right? Correct?
Uh, no, it's, it's, it's to be demolished. Yeah, it's shut down. Yeah. So when it comes down, then we do have that right of way. And that does kind of line up with where that two thousand and eight design. Was supposed to go. However, um, that two thousand and eight design, once they finished it up. It came to about one point three million dollars. So they, for some reason, it really blew up in cost. But I think, you know, if we start to work with ODOT, I think we could probably find a way to get things done in that quarter a lot cheaper.
Originally, one of the plans was to create a road where those, um. Story units are.
Right.
And run through there, not all the way down to, um. Appomattox, but run through there.
Right.
The, the, you wouldn't be on that corner where you've got the big, because the big come off one twenty five, they, they just come around and fall.
Right.
They, they, they don't slow down or anything. Uh, so that was the plan there. And we're also going to make a side load from out of, um. Out of, um, out of Kroger.
Right.
Alongside those small houses.
Right.
And out there somewhere, so that, you know, people from, um. From Lewis had somewhere to go.
Right. There, there's also, there's also a design that actually shuts off, um, White Oak. Um, and so it, it, it ends at one twenty five, but that Lewis section. Cause you've got, you know, the Lewis Road connection with residents that are back there. Plus you have, um, Tombstone and you have the car lot. They would utilize Lewis to get onto White Oak. White Oak would then be a left-hand turn. You take Appomattox out to one twenty five. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of different ways that we can, that we can crack at this. And it's, it's just. Matter of picking one and, and getting ODOT to agree to help us fund it. Which I've actually been surprised that there's been a, a lot more interest from ODOT. About actually getting something done there than I can remember in the past. So I'm hoping it's not going to take another thirty years for you.
This is where the soup's at. Of course, there's a hell of a lot of cars going into Stan's and then I'll turn. To go, Lewis will turn to go down White Oak. And that's part of his life, including where it is with that access.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, he's been a, a member of this community for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
But we do most to, um, think of that one.
Right. Well, that's all part of the process of, of when, when you start off with these studies. You always start off about fifty thousand feet and you work your way down. And so those, those are the kinds of details. That you, you go through because you don't really want to do any damage to a business that's flourishing. So when you're, when you're looking at, at his property, he opens up onto one twenty five. So he has access on one twenty five. And he has access onto White Oak. So if you shut off White Oak. At one twenty five, he's, he's not, he's not injured, um, by, by that, by that kind of development.
I'm sure you could always look another, look clever, right turn only.
Yeah, there's lots of stuff. Right.
A lot of that's detail that we could, you know, explore, but I do appreciate you bringing some of this to our attention.
Stand flat.
Right.
And, and you get over there and then make a right turn and just screw everybody up.
Right.
Trying to.
Right.
Through that intersection. I mean, it's, it's going to kill people.
Yeah. We've had a number of very serious accidents there. Um, I mean, certainly in just the recent memory, but. Further back than that, I remember there's, there's always been a hotspot there. And so it's getting ODOT to. To help us with, you know, with the cash to, to really pull it off. A really good project, I think, would do well there. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, anyone?
Well, I hope so. I really hope so.
Sounds good. We need something to liven up the meeting a little bit. Otherwise it's just motions and approvals. Anybody else? Yeah.
I'm surprised.
Working. Stan Shabell, I think you know where I live. I, I wanted to ask, um, Development Manager about the plan that was put in for Mo in Ten Mile. But for that property there, uh, that property's been sitting around since we denied the Otobine, um. Development there. That's got to be seven or eight years ago now.
Longer than that. Yeah, it was longer than that.
And it's the same story. It's a little road coming out of there, right around that corner. Which is really a bad corner before you get to whatever that side street is there. A, and that's a, a dangerous place. To have that sort of business. And the, the micro lots, they're not, I mean. It's single-family residential, which is half acre lots. That's how it's zoned now. And they're looking to do third of an acre or, or a quarter of an acre at best. And, um, that's. All that's going to do is put, you know, sixty cars, fifty or sixty cars trying to get out onto, um, Ten Mile. Which is, you know, which is already a looney bin without, you know, um, having extra cars there. So, you know, um, you know, I wanted to ask you where we are and, and. What's the next step in that? Is there, there a meeting, a, you know, public meeting? We're going to notify the public about this. As opposed to like, because if it's just at a zoning meeting, nobody comes. All we get is NIMBYs. I mean, it's like. This, all, all you get is NIMBYs. Um, so, um.
Well, um, one, one aspect of that is that, um, I mean, whoever is, is applying to develop that property. Um, if they're doing their homework, they should look back at what we've done historically as a board, um, with different PUD projects. They're essentially asking for a rezoning of that property from standard residential, which is on it now, to something that allows for more density. And I, I, I'm speaking generally and maybe a little more for myself, but it's my opinion. And as a board, we've been fairly consistent on what our expectations are. Um, for, for those types of, of projects in regards to a net benefit for the township or trying to ensure that that. That could be the case. So I, I, I think that that, you know, again. That's something that we've been pretty consistent on.
Right. Uh, I'm, so at the end of that, that, my question would be, do we have a methodology to alert? The residents of, um, meetings that have that sort of potential. I mean, if we, we talked about the road. Uh, you know, when we go to work on the roads and you guys come to a decision, um, here's what we agreed with the county. Uh, and it'd be nice if the residents knew about that before suddenly this roadblocks go up on that corner. Or, or it's signed saying, no, you can't go here. You gotta go there. Did a little, you know.
Yeah, that's a good point. Well, we have our circle and stuff that goes out automatically with a lot of it, but.
Yeah, that's a good question. So, um, we were actually talking about other methods actually today about how we can put it on our website for ongoing projects and things like that. So that was something we were considering adding. But as far as the way that statute goes, um, all adjacent property owners will get their mailers, will also advertise it'll be put out, um. And the Claremont Sun, obviously, but it'll, we'll put it on Facebook and Circle as well.
On the one seat.
Right. Yeah, okay, you look at it. Okay, okay. Thanks.
And thanks Stan. Also to Mr. Shadwell's point too, the traffic is a good, it's a good question. Like we, um. In addition to the county engineer's office, we also have a consulting engineer that we work with. So we'll route, we route those plans to them as well.
Good. Okay.
Yeah.
I believe if, if, if there's enough traffic generation, I believe that.
I've never seen. I have never seen Claremont County Auditor say that a development causes strain on infrastructure. It doesn't seem to follow, even though logically I can look at it and say it does. Um, so I, I'm not, I'm not overly convinced. Um, as memory serves, that's only seven acres over there. And I thought you said twenty seven? How many?
Yeah, but still. Twenty nine houses.
You're putting twenty seven units. I mean, this is not.
Twenty nine.
This is not a discussion for us to have right here.
Probably not. But yeah, generally that's, I was just going to kind of refer to that. But yeah, thank you, Stan. Uh, some of those are good ideas as far as alerting for sure. Yeah. All right. Anybody else want to come up?
Sure.
Try your luck. See how it goes.
Kathy Jorgensen. Um, I just wanted to say how much we appreciate our police services.
Um, I just wanted to say how much we appreciate our police services and encourage everyone, all our citizens, all our residents, um, the trustees to do anything we can to help keep our police in place and make sure that we don't lose anybody between now and hopefully when that levy's gonna pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, thank you for what you're doing with the, with the levy campaign.
Thanks.
And you too, Stan. And you too, Gil.
All involved.
Everybody.
Anybody else? Okay. Um, so we are gonna have to go into some, uh, to an executive session and we'll make, uh, some motions here in a second. Uh, I'm not sure if there will be action taken out, uh, after we adjourn from the executive session, but anybody who's welcome to stick around can. Um, so I will need a motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1 to consider the employment dismissal, discipline, or compensation of a public employee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G8 to discuss confidential information related to an economic development prospect. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion and second discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G3 to conference with township attorney to discuss imminent or pending litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, we'll be back.
Going to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Oh.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. No one has anything else, so I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.